We have. Lou, you want to read this? You want me to read it?
All right, so roll call County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Devoe.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here.
For the record, Director, Commissioner Duffy is joining us telephonically.
Okay. Do you want me to read this?
Okay, um, so we could, ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to the meeting specifying the time, date, and location filed with the county clerk in Post Administration Building and published in the annual notice.
Need to read this. Take a motion to open a public hearing? Not yet?
This is the public.
Okay.
Ask everyone to please stand and join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Other Ryan?
Christ as a light, illumine and guide us. Christ be over me, Christ behind me, Christ on my left, Christ on my right. Christ be before me, behind me, about me. Christ, this day I walk with you. Christ, the lowly and the meek, Christ will, will, all-powerful, be to the heart of each to whom I speak, in the mouth of those who speak to me, in all that I do this day, all that I see, all that I hear. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for, remember, all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Thank you. Take a motion to approve the minutes of October 14, 2025?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Duffy, second by Cruz, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett. Cruz.
Yes.
Devoe.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve the proclamations.
Second.
Motion made by Bartlett, second by.
Director, there should, we should have wrote "none" next to that. There is none.
Okay. I follow what you're going to do.
Swing and a miss.
I can't. Administrators report.
Yes, Director, good evening. First, on my agenda, we have a recognition ceremony celebrating creativity and civic pride, honoring a number of young students in Passaic County. I could call up our Superintendent of Elections, Shawna McPollock, and Commissioners Devoe, Lazara, and Cruz for this presentation.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor to welcome you to this very special recognition ceremony. Tonight, we gather to celebrate the creativity, talent, and civic spirit of an exceptional group of students whose designs were chosen for our county's new I Voted stickers. What makes this group even more special is that they were chosen by their peers to represent the incredible cohort of future leaders and changemakers better known as Girl Goals. To be clear, after an engaging educational tour at the Superintendent of Elections office this past summer, 35 girls from the city of Patterson, ranging in grades from K through eight, participated in a thoughtful and meaningful discussion about voting and the electoral process, which was then followed by a little craft activity designing a new I Voted sticker. When the girls were done, my staff and I were completely blown away by their artwork. We narrowed down the choices to three in three age groups, and the girls got to pick for their winner on our voting machines. It was such an enriching day, and we were truly honored to provide the girls with their first experience in a lifelong journey of civic engagement. Thank you, Zainab, Sophia, Kayla, and Khadijah, for honoring us with your contribution to the 2025 general election. These stickers and designs will be proudly worn by thousands of voters and will serve as a small but powerful symbol of participation in our democracy. Voting is the cornerstone of our democratic society, and tremendous thanks to the Girls, Girl Goals Summer Program and their program directors, Sharice Taylor and Farhan Asayeg, Farhan Asayeg. They have created a program that cultivates confidence, leadership, and civic pride. By partnering with Girl Goals and inviting the students to design the stickers, we hope to continue to build on the interest, their interest in civic engagement while also encouraging the next generation to see themselves as vital participants in shaping our future. Their remarkable artwork that you will see here today reflects that goal beautifully. I would like to extend my heartfelt congratulations to each of the students we are honoring, along with their parents, family, friends, teachers, principals, and community leaders. Your creativity will inspire countless voters to wear these stickers with pride, sharing their message that every vote truly does count. Thank you. I want to recognize a few people that are here tonight. I see Dr. Lori Newell, who's our Patterson School Superintendent, who is so gracious here to join us in celebrating these girls tonight, as well as Deborah Robinson, who's here on behalf of Keisha Drakeford, who are our county superintendent of school.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent of Elections. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give these young ladies a big round of applause. I think it is, my colleagues and I probably echo the same sentiments about the importance of having our young people involved in our civic process, letting them know from a young age how their voices are powerful and can be heard, and how voting is extremely important for their, the protection of our future and their future, because at the end of the day, the work that we are doing up there is truly for you guys and for that next generation of leaders to come. You guys will be sitting up here one day, and that's our job is to make sure that we lay the foundation for our young people to continue the great work that's being done here. So another big round of applause to the young ladies and the young people that were involved. And Madam Superintendent, I'll ask you to please call them up as we give them each their proper recognition. You have certificates from the Board of Commissioners, from our county clerk, Danielle Island Imhoff, and our Madam Superintendent of Elections as well has something for you. So you guys will be called up one at a time, then at the end, we'll do one big group photo. At that point, Dr. Newell, I'll ask you to join us for the big group photo as well. All right. Yeah, first person?
You want to do the first person?
Is that the same name?
Yeah. So, Zainab, Zainab. Amen. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Just stay up here, we'll take a picture at the end. Yeah, no, this is, we'll do a picture at the end with the group. Khadijah Mustafa.
Congratulations.
Kayla Seiya.
You're Kayla.
And the dog.
That's a little French. Yeah.
What's the dog's name?
Haley.
Haley. Let's give it up for Haley, everybody. Sophia Pardo Martinez.
There you go, sweetie. Congratulations.
You're welcome. All right, we'll ask my colleagues to join us for a photo. Before we do that, Shawna asked me to say something about these young ladies who rock. And to be honest with you, I was like, what do you want me to say? And she said, whatever's on your heart. I want to say this, young ladies, congratulations. This is a big deal, and you all are a big deal. Keep up the engagement, and like Cruz said, one day, you'll be sitting up there as well. We thank you for your involvement, and I wore my sticker proud when I voted on Saturday. Thank you. So before we do the group photo, we've just been joined by our Mayor of the City of Patterson, Andres Sable. I'll ask him to come up and say a few words. I noticed our Commissioner said "a few words." I'm not quite sure if I'm capable of doing that, but.
This isn't the Patterson City Council.
That's true. Wrong venue. Good afternoon, everyone. First, I want to salute our Superintendent. Thank you. As a matter of fact, we were on the phone a few weeks ago. We are going to finally repave River Street, and we said it will be accomplished by her birthday. That's my gift to her, May 25th, correct, Superintendent? There you go. And I'm not just here as the Mayor of the City of Patterson and saluting these young ladies. I'm a proud parent. One of the honorees is, or winners, is my daughter Kayla. Kayla Seiya. And a real testament to her mom and her sisters here, Sophia and her brother Aiden, we take parenting very seriously in our city, and we're proud of the fact that our three children are at the number one school, Dr. Newell, in not just the city, but in the state of New Jersey, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report. And I see Sharice, thank you for what you're doing with our Civic Association, because it's about empowerment and providing our young people with positive outlets. So yes, we want to encourage them to vote, but we want to also encourage them to be engaged. And civic engagement is a priority for us as a family, and it should be a priority for the city of Patterson as well. So can't wait for you to be registered to vote, and just remember how you spell my name on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Guys, are you going to be a write-in?
Why are you standing?
We know someone, whether it's a spouse or loved one, whether it's a colleague, whether it's someone in our community or in our neighborhood who's been affected by this and the fact that it affects entire families when it strikes an individual. So just to take a moment to read into the record. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women in the United States and remains one of the leading causes of cancer-related deaths. And whereas approximately one in eight women, as we saw, will have a chance of being diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, and men are also at risk with a chance of one in 726. And whereas in Passaic County between 2018 and 2022, the New Jersey State Cancer Registry recorded a total of 13,735 cases of invasive breast cancer. And whereas early detection through regular screenings and mammograms can significantly increase survival rates and improve outcomes. And whereas the Passaic County Commissioners and Passaic County Department of Health Services are dedicated to promoting education, prevention, and access to resources that support individuals and families affected by breast cancer. And whereas during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we recognize the courage and strength of survivors, honor those who have lost their lives to this disease, and reaffirm our commitment to supporting research, awareness, and access to care. And whereas community organizations, healthcare providers, and residents throughout Passaic County play a vital role in promoting awareness and supporting those impacted by breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Passaic County and encourages all residents, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all our other interested groups to participate in awareness activities like Denim Day where pink to show support and take proactive steps for their health and well-being. And be it further resolved that this board commends the ongoing work of healthcare professionals, advocacy groups, and volunteers who continue to advance education, screening, and treatment for breast cancer in our community. Signed by all of the county commissioners. And we're happy to present it to you.
Thank you.
As part of all the extraordinary work that you do with the Women's Health Extravaganza and with awareness efforts to all of our county employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next on my agenda, as everyone knows, earlier this year, we launched Passaic County Move, which is a micro-transit pilot program in the cities of Passaic and Clifton that has been wildly successful, as you'll see from the presentation. Fitting to recognize Passaic Board of Education Commissioner Christina Schratz, who's joined us. I hope you've been using Passaic County Move. And I'm going to call up our operating vendor for the program, Via, to give a little update on where we stand with things.
First off, we're
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. As you can tell, we're really excited to be here. And it's hard to believe that it's only five months since the service has launched. So really excited just to join you here today to, as Matthew was saying, go through what the service is, how it provides so much value to the residents of the county, and what we're excited about moving forward. So just to introduce myself, my name is Mike Longay. I'm the Partner Success Principal, working with Passaic County Move.
My name is Risha. I'm a Vice President of Operations here at Via, and I oversee our transit partnerships here in New Jersey, including with Passaic County Move.
Great. So we'll start with a high-level view, just looking at New Jersey. We're lucky to work with so many different counties, agencies, municipalities in Jersey. And being a Jersey boy myself, I'm excited to work with a lot of those agencies and organizations. Two of the things that we're most proud of are on the left-hand side of the screen. So first, the safety and the accident rate. Where compared to relevant statistics for FTA, our accident rate is 36% lower than what you might expect from an FTA average. And so the other thing that we're really excited about, including with Passaic, is just the rate at which we connect people to other forms of public transit. So people really use our service not just to do errands themselves or to connect to medical resources, but also to actually connect to a bus or NJ Transit or other types of public transit. Just to give a lay of the land, knowing that some folks are more or less familiar, we launched on May 20th. And again, feels wild to think that that was only five months ago because the service really has come so far in such a short time. Thinking back to the reasons why the county invested in this, a lot of it's about access and opportunity. This service really connects people in a way that they weren't able to before, to opportunity for medical services, jobs, going to school, and even just doing essential errands that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise if they hadn't had the service. Importantly, it's also connecting them to economic opportunity, and it's driving some economic growth in the county by helping people get to work and helping people do connective trips that, again, are hard to access without this type of service. At a high level, the service zone is about 10 square miles. There are about 10 vehicles, three of them service wheelchair access, and it's open for about 12 hours a day, sorry, 14 hours a day during weekdays. One thing that you'll see at the bottom of the screen is average ride rating. So when folks take a look at our service and they rate it from one to five, that average is 4.9. So we're really excited that when people are using the service, they're like, wow, five stars, love it. And I think that's a lot of what's driving the use of the service today. And here's a quick look at cumulative rides over time. So what you'll see is just a really strong growth in terms of how many people are using the service. You might see this statistic on the right, productivity. That's really a mark of efficiency. So what this is showing is that each van is carrying about four passengers per hour that it's active, which is really showing that these vans are moving. Like, true to the name, it's moving folks in and out of the county, and these are shared rides. This isn't an Uber, this isn't a Lyft, this is public transportation that is connecting people and even having a lot of shared rides within that service. Core to the purpose of this program is accessibility. And something that we're proud of and eager to present is some of these statistics. When we surveyed our riders, 86% of them don't have access to their own personal vehicle. 75% of them have a household income of less than $50,000. So when we think of who's using the service and how, you can see some of these survey responses on the left. This person in the middle is saying, "I need the service every day to get my daughter to school and to do my errands." Or, "I use this to go to the grocery store and the cleaners." Or, "This is what I use to get my kids to their doctor's appointments." So really proud and excited about how the service has grown and how it's really servicing these trips that are just critical for medical opportunities, employment opportunities, school and work. And last of all, really excited just to show a map of how people are using the service and where the most popular destinations are. So when we're chatting with the team today, it really seems like a lot of the trips are most clustered around the high-density downtown areas. You'll see things like Passaic High School, or the train station, or the park and ride. And again, 57% of people using the service are using it to get to school or get to work. So all in all, really excited about how people are using the service to expand access to all those things. Finally, one thing that we're proud of is the drivers. Because the connection between the drivers and the riders is a lot of what drives that high engagement. When people love the person who's driving them, they come back. And you can actually see this bottom statistic down here is the average number of trips per rider per month. So we're so excited that in the last month, from September 23rd to October 23rd, each rider took about 8.6 trips. That's a person who's really using and valuing the service. And so when you talk to your constituents, I think one thing you can ask them is like, "Who is your driver?" And some of them might be able to tell you, like, "Donnie's very personable," or "Nashali is so nice and so pleasant." And one thing we're excited to share is that when we look at who we're hiring and who's operating the service, three-quarters of the drivers are from Passaic County. And so really excited about how this is an engine for economic growth and for just access to medical services and care. That's what we have for you, and we love any questions.
I just have a quick question. The drivers, how are they, are they salaried employee? Or how do they get compensated? You know, your typical rideshare program, they receive a piece of the revenue. In this case, how are they compensated?
The drivers are compensated on a per-hour basis. So even if they provide zero rides in an hour or five rides in an hour, they're still getting that same hourly rate. So it becomes a really nice predictable source of earnings, and our average driver is driving over 35 hours a week with us.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think one thing that is helpful about that is when you think about that FTA statistic, our drivers aren't rushing to get as many rides as they possibly can. And so I think we're hoping to provide the right incentives for that safe, high-quality ride.
Thank you. Do you have a number of how many folks use this service since its inception?
It's about 32,000 completed rides.
Oh, that's all? Very good, very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Any sense, and first of all, thank you guys for the presentation and for really an extraordinary kickoff. I'm excited that we've gotten the start that we have. I'm excited that we're applying for funding to expand the service area. I think it's a terrific program. Any sense of how many ride, how frequently is a rider riding with another rider as opposed to riding alone in the van? I know one of the things is it's about shared rides and shared destinations. How often are you riding with a neighbor as opposed to just you and the driver?
We can double-check, but I believe it's about 51%. That's a measure of how often am I sharing at least one minute of my van time with another person?
I took a ride this morning and was on board with two other people. It was really nice to see, and it was slightly after the peak time of the day, so it was really nice to just see that that shared ride experience in the car, had some nice conversation with others in the vehicle. It was just really nice to see that community feeling in the vehicle as well.
I know, understanding it's not door-to-door service, has there any been feedback on the fact of, you know, people having to get to the pickup hub?
Fortunately, no. Typically, you walk, you know, one to two blocks in order to meet your vehicle unless you are in a wheelchair or have some other mobility impairment. And then in those cases, we meet you right where you requested your ride and drop you off right where you requested as well. Would definitely be curious if you all hear anything from your constituents, but from our perspective, we have not been hearing any notable complaints or negative feedback about the corner-to-corner experience.
Got it.
It'll be interesting to see what happens now that
In the winter.
We are entering the winter. We will keep a close eye on it and can definitely calibrate if needed.
All right, thank you.
Basically answered my question in reference to answering his, I wanted to know the hiccups that you were experiencing, and hearing none, I guess that's a good thing.
Generally not. I think there's always some learnings with a new service. For instance, I think that we're really seeing how much of the service is seasonal. And as you saw, one of our top destinations is Passaic High School. So I think there's some opportunities for us to really learn about the seasonality of the service, pull back slightly on the number, the amount of supply that we're putting on the road in the summer. Those are the types of things that we can just learn with time. I wouldn't call them a hiccup, I would just call it learnings as we really learn and make sure that we're providing a great local service here in Passaic County.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great, thank, I mean, one of the interesting things for me was how many, you know, kids and students are using it to get to schools. When, you know, we were starting, launching this program, that wasn't even something I was contemplating. But it really has been a successful program in terms of economic debility, economic development, mobility, affordability. You know, we've heard a lot of anecdotal stuff about people that were otherwise using Ubers to get to work that are now using Passaic County Move and saving hundreds of dollars. So you talk about affordability in a service for our resident, it's residents, it's really fantastic. So thank you both.
Thank you. It was very nice to see you all, and I'm sure we'll be back again soon. So thank you.
All right, next on the docket, we have finalized Passaic County's Heritage Tourism Master Plan, and we have a presentation from our Director of Cultural and Historic Affairs, Kelly Rafel. So Kelly?
She ran down the aisle, this could be trouble.
I hope, oh, okay, we can hear me well, right? So thank you for the opportunity to present on our recent planning initiative, which is the update to the Passaic County Heritage Tourism Master Plan. The last plan was completed in 2013, very transportation-focused, and it was led by then Michael La Place and Michael Isakatos, former planning directors for the county. This was grant-funded by the New Jersey Historic Trust. We received $75,000, and it was a truly team effort. We had the Friends of Passaic County Parks, and our project team was Clark Cane Hens, Hunter Research, and Harv Grove International, who is sort of the premier tourism study agency at this current time. So when I'm, again, this is a summary. We are going to go through, with support of the Planning Department, the process to adopt this plan. So you will see this back here at the board. So this is just a general summary, and then afterwards I'll provide a link and wonderful copies of our Heritage Tourism Plan for you to look through and provide any comments. So the plan itself is broken down into three components. The first is sort of this assessment of heritage tourism within the county in general. So first, right, we conducted this comprehensive review of existing heritage tourism products and visitor services. So what is that? Kiosks, maps, anything that's sort of tangible for, you know, tourism. We evaluated changes since the 2013 plan. So what did we accomplish from that plan? What were areas in need of improvement? You know, what do we do well and how do we build upon that? We also assessed visitor readiness of new and emerging attractions. So, right, 2013 till now, especially with our push for, you know, park development, historic site restoration, we didn't have the same attractions during the first plan that we do now. And to add that, it didn't just look at Passaic County-owned property, but the county, you know, privately-owned other municipalities, et cetera. So we have a full detail assessment on each of those attractions. And then we analyzed the economic impact of tourism within the county using 2015, 2019, and 2023 and 2024 data, which is through various studies that are produced by either other counties, the state of New Jersey, and private schools, specifically Stockton University, who is our premier hospitality industry school here. The next component, very important, research and stakeholder engagement. So we examined different trends and market profiles. Our comparative studies are with our neighbors in Bergen County and Morris County. We looked to, you know, further reaching with Chester County in Pennsylvania, Rockland County, Westchester County in New York. So there's a lot of data that kind of places Passaic County, you know, against our neighbors, but we're, you know, sort of in the same trend of growth as compared to our neighbors. We did quite a few surveys, one-on-one interviews with our constituents, and we held focus groups to establish what our priorities are going to be and what those benchmarks of success. So with that, you know, sort of that material and that data and information, we were able to develop an analysis that, you know, shows Passaic County's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. So an example, a weakness, you know, identified as about public transportation and access. So, right, we, public transportation routes in the lower part of the county is great, but now how do we get those visitors from Patterson, Passaic, Clifton, all the way up to the Highlands region? So that is like defined. And then what that analysis will do is give us, you know, sort of, sorry, losing my words, will give us, you know, ideas to how to improve that. And then lastly, during this component, and again, with our stakeholders and the relationships that we have throughout the county, we were able to come up with a five-year, so this is actually a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan. Usually these are a bit longer. So it's our Vision 2030 that outlines, you know, five years of goals, objectives, and implementation strategies. And just to kind of, overall, the data that we collected, I wanted to kind of share Passaic County in numbers. Just overall, the state of New Jersey, the tourism industry is about $45 billion annually and $3.9 billion of that, so that's about 8%, 9% is from directly heritage tourism. So it's visiting historic sites, visiting parks. And that trend is growing from pre-pandemic till now, and especially with all the buzzwords of, you know, the World Cup next year, 250th, we do see an increase by year in that. So how does Passaic County fit in? So in 2000, so last year, 2024, we're estimated to have 2.1 million business and leisure travelers who have visited our county, which is a 4.5 increase from the year prior to that. Most of this comes from day visitors, you know, that is our sort of bread and butter. That's at 1.47 million. And then our overnight visitors are about 700,000, which is still an increase from 2023, about 2.6%. And it's above where we were pre-pandemic. And then lastly, what are our goals? So our goals, just wanted to give broader context or fit in these four categories. Right, preservation and stewardship, of course, we are the Department of Cultural and Historic Affairs, that is what we do. So how are we going to preserve our county's historic and cultural assets as we move forward? How do we expand and deliver on the high-quality programs? So between the Parks Department, our department, we have already been providing different experiences, different events, right? Book Festival, Art in the Park, the recreation soccer tournaments. So, you know, we're offering over 600 programs annually, and that continues to build each year. So, you know, through this, you know, how do we even build upon that? What's our capacity going to be? How do we reach different audiences? And the next activity or goal sector is encouraging, encouraging development, just like we were, we've been talking about Passaic County Move. So, right, how do we make the infrastructure that's accessible to get visitors to our sites and our parks? And then branding and marketing, how do, you know, outside of Passaic County, how do we brand and market to, you know, bring others in? So the last slide, I promise. So there are goals for years one, year two, year three, year four, or five. So I've kind of condensed, like, some of the maybe ones that would jump out more, but know that there are, you know, over probably 100 different activities that have been identified in this plan for us from all various, you know, levels, minor to major. Just some examples I'll throw out here, right, developing a Passaic County Arts and Cultural Plan. I can tell you that since the restoration of the Arts Center and implementing that, it is probably one of our most busiest, historic sites. You know, art programs sell out very quickly. So sort of expanding outside of Hawthorne, where the location is, developing a countywide arts and cultural plan is one recommendation. Hire a branding consultant. We have already gone through that, like, for the first part of the Heritage Tourism 2013 Plan was about wayfinding, which the county did in 2018, 2019, and we love that logo. So now how do we take that further when marketing our sites? And happy to report that we did receive a grant to do justice, another $75,000 from the New Jersey Historic Trust this year. You know, host an annual tourism week, a lot of building workshops for our partners, constituents in various different fields, whether it's hospitality, food, education. So having these workshops to, you know, educate people on what we do, how they can contribute and be a part of tourism in the county, increasing our wayfinding and directional signage for sites and parks, developing travel itinerarys and weekend promotions. So again, just various activities that we would implement or start to implement over the next five years. And then really in closing, the plan overall speaks to the volume of the foundation that has already been built by this board over the last 10 years. Again, can't thank you enough for the historic site restorations, our park development acquisitions, funding for programs that has allowed us to get to where we are today. It also has allowed Passaic County to establish itself as a destination marketing organization. We were also the first county to go through the tourism, like, certificate program that the state had offered two years ago. And we're one of the few counties who are receiving direct funds from the Division of Travel and Tourism for initiatives just like this. So we look forward to implementing this plan, starting now till 2030. And I'll take questions if there are any.
So what do you have planned for the 250th anniversary?
We will start with the opening of Lambert Castle, followed by the opening of the Skylar Colfax House, reopening of the tower. So how I have approached 250th, and we're the only county doing this, I attend 250th roundtables at the state level, our next one is in Hunterdon County. We're the only ones who have invested on a capital level to get sites visitor-ready. So Passaic County sites will all be open and ready for our 250th anniversary. This is not the norm in the state, funding for historic sites and, you know, right there, some of them are nonprofit-owned or, you know, municipal-owned, like, they have various stories, and they're not in a position that we are in. So we've kind of approached this as sort of a preservation and capital investment. Second, we are going to be rolling out our 2026 calendar, very Dimension-heavy, but, you know, we have been working on 250th since 2019. Passaic County is still revolutionary, that is our slogan, because, right, the American Revolution was fought here. You know, we have Washington's headquarters, the Industrial Revolution, well, without Passaic County, the Industrial Revolution in America would not have taken shape. And then we go to the Labor Revolution of the 19-teens, where, you know, we have the Bateau House and instrumental movements during the Silk Strike. So we've contributed to, right, you know, over 250 years of American history. So we will have programming that will fit all of those themes.
You have a kickoff event?
We can have a kickoff, is that?
Good idea. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kelly. And it's honestly, it's convenient that Passaic County Move is here because it shows how a lot of what we're doing is happening in tandem. Kelly talked about the Passaic County Book Festival, and we were actually able to do a push notification to residents in Clifton and Passaic that the book festival is happening, and you can get a ride via, via to get there through Passaic County Move. So I think this report, and great job, Kelly, is very timely because over the last 10 years, we've, the board has spent upwards of $50 million on the park system and our historic sites. And now we all have them in a place where we need, you know, our focus is on improving the visitor experience. And, you know, there's a ton of different benefits to Passaic County in terms of this investment we've made. You know, Kelly talked about the tourism, the economic development, the increase in property values. So it's all, you know, great stuff that this board is doing, Kelly's department and all the other departments.
Very often, we're able to do that with supplementation of federal and state and charitable funds to make these projects possible at minimum cost to the taxpayer. Kelly, I want to acknowledge you and your whole exceptional staff, and also the volunteer members of our boards, the Friends of Passaic County Parks and Friends of Dimension.
I just have, if I can, just real quick, what tools do you use to measure the approximate visitors? I ask, because I know, like, at the Great Falls parking lot, they have like, you know, a mechanism on the ground that clicks every time a car drives over it. So I'm just curious on what we use.
Is an excellent question. Every site uses a different, let's say, system, if you will, whether it is metric like reading car data, visitation surveys, you know, visitor counters, ticket sales. So it's a great question because a lot of, there's a lot of data in this that is about, like, visitors and visitors in terms of numbers. So it is compiling from what from what sites individually report, what businesses report, but then overall, like, state economic studies, which, again, right, is sort of general, and is probably underreported than where it truly is.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Director, next we have a public hearing for the exterior restoration of the Passaic County Courthouse Annex. I think I'll turn that over to Lou when he gets back up here. I guess while Lou's doing that, I can just note, in relation to this project, we have secured through Kelly's department a $2.25 million grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust, which is going to fund a big portion of these improvements.
This public, this public hearing is being held to solicit the comments from the public regarding the County of Passaic Department of Cultural and Historical Affairs' desire to establish pre-qualifications to bidders for the exterior restoration of the Passaic County Courthouse Annex, historically known as the U.S. Customs House, whose address is 6365 Hamilton Street in the city of Patterson, New Jersey. The goals of this project are to clean, repair, and restore the entire exterior condition of the building, replace all existing ironwork fencing, add and improve exterior lighting, and modernize the clock mechanism. The scope of the work consists of a single-prime contract or general conditions, acquisition of all required permit provisions of temporary facilities and controls, selective demolition, masonry and roof restoration, replication of ironwork and fencing, membrane roof replacement, clock tower repair and modernization, electrical and lighting installation, and window replacement according to the project manual plans and specification. This, this public hearing is being held today at 5:30 on Tuesday, October 28, in Room 220 in Passaic County Administration Building. The following public hearing was noticed in the Herald News and the Record on October 5, 2025. Roll call. Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, Devoire, Duffy.
Here.
Hold on one second. Deputy Director Lizarra.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. Motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on this application?
Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Bartlett to close. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Bartlett, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. All right, County Commissioner reports.
I had two more quick things, Director.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, they weren't listed. We had a note sale last week or the week before, two weeks ago, Rich? Two weeks ago. We had four bidders. Jeffries was the winning bidder with a net interest cost of 2.56%, which is a very good interest rate. Shows how strong Passaic County's financial position is in the market, testament to the work of our Chief Financial Officer, Rich Cahill, our former administrator who's joined us here, Anthony De Nova, often likes to remind me of the very different financial states the county was in when we entered this position. So great work by all. And then finally, I just want to note that, as everyone knows, the federal government has been shut down. We've been noticed that SNAP benefits are going to run out on November 1. I just want to recognize the great work being done by our Human Services Director, working with local food pantries to prepare. I know Commissioner Lizarra has been very involved. We're doing everything we can to support our local food pantries, as they're going to see increased people visiting as these benefits run out. So that's all I have.
Okay. Questions? All right, Commissioner reports. Rodney, I think you have.
Thank you, Director. Throughout my campaign, I was always reminded, and I would mention every now and then how my mother taught me some valuable lessons of saying please and thank you, and you're saying, where are you going with this? So I continue to say, please to the residents and voters of Passaic County to be patient as I get my footing together and to do what needs to be done to move Passaic County forward. I also say thank you for the vote and confidence to sit in this seat, to do what I need to do to also, with all that was said today and presented, to move Passaic County forward. And on this particular day, October 28, 2025, I want to say thank you to my mother for those lessons, and happy 95th birthday.
Anyone else? Okay. Communications, take a motion to open a public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Devoire, second by Cruz. Roll call.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step forward to the microphone. Know that you have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and know also that anything that you say is a matter of public record.
Commissioner Duffy, no one's here.
Motion made by Duffy to close, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. County councils informed me that there are no late starters. Does anyone want to vote on anything separately?
Nope.
Yes, Commissioner. Do I have to vote or for item number three?
I think you just recuse yourself. You can abstain.
If you do consent, it's Jim.
Have to vote separately?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to vote on L1 and L2, and L4 to L61.
So moved.
Motion made by Bartlett, second, or, I'm sorry, Devoire, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Take a motion on L3.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Abstain.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Under new business, take a motion for personnel.
Move the personnel.
Moved by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Take a motion for bills.
Move the bills.
Second.
Moved by Cruz, second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Okay, before I ask for an adjournment, I just want to remind everyone that next Tuesday is Election Day. You hear it a thousand times, but I think this time is the most important time. It's the future of our, not only of our, this board, but our state. With the two candidates up, please don't take it for granted. Please get out and exercise your civic duty to vote, get people that you know, family, friends, to vote. Again, I say that it's very, very important. Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, through you, Director. You'll be happy to hear this.
I will.
Yeah. On December 9, we invite you all to come to the meeting. You'll be here. But we are going to honor Director Lapore and Commissioner Duffy at our meeting on the 9th. Did I say 10?
Mm-hmm.
December 9.
Yep.
It's a Tuesday, so, yes, you all have to show up. Did you get that, Duffy?
For their 21 years.
And it's to honor them for their 21 years of service. So we invite you to be here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner, and my colleagues on the board. I'll probably have something to say then, but right now, I'll start out by saying it's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you, and all the past commissioners, the current department, Administration Department here, under Matt Jordan, the former administration head. Anthony De Nova, sitting in the back, trying to hide. So I have a couple more things to say. I know, I know. I heard him, I heard him. I'm trying to ignore him, unfortunately. It'll be here on the night.
Difficult to do.
Okay. Thank you very much, folks. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Devoire.
By Devoire, second by Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lizarra.
Yes.